There's three people.
Okay.
Might be time to reboot on that end. Whoever's not getting anything on any platform, maybe reboot.
You know, my screen just changed. Maybe ask somebody who talks to you.
She just said now she's now it just came up, whatever, so whatever.
Sorry for that, but at least we're live here. We do it by an audience.
Well, the public hearing is, yeah, opposed is live. So it's like, you know, we're in person. It's just we're offering this as a hybrid.
But if it wasn't working, maybe they do want to sign in, you know, to.
Yeah, well, they're in now. So that's fine. I just want to make sure it was, you know, that we weren't, you know, people weren't watching a black screen at home. So it looks like it's all good. So where are we? Mr. Kearney, do you have any thoughts on school choice? I'm sorry.
Absolutely. Well, I'd love to vote for this. And I just have a couple of questions. This is limited to like 5%, correct? Like there isn't like, it's not going to be like communities bringing in this 5%, am I correct?
There's a percent. I'm not sure exactly what the number is.
Okay, so we're just talking about maybe, I don't know, we got how many kids in the school system, 1,400?
Just 115.
So we're talking 50, 60 kids. 10 times, you get about 16,000 a kid, right? It's childish, I should say. Sorry. Student, 10 children would be 160,000, right? So that could fund two teachers. Good. Okay. The other, the one of my skeptical parts though would be is to use it as for sports, right? We don't want to be trying to get kids to come from other communities to play sports. That wouldn't be. So what, why I would like to vote for this is because I think that anybody that would take the opportunity to go and drive, because the communities that we're talking about aren't even around here. Situwe doesn't participate. Marshville doesn't participate. So no one really around here participates.
I think you have a list of everyone.
Yeah, so like, let's talk about like Randolph, right? I think if somebody wants to drive their kid to, or child from Randolph to here every day, I think that just shows a huge motivation to go to school, to get that education that they're not getting. Right? So I think that I, you know, without, I feel like without all the solutions or all the answers that I don't even think that you should be able to really even vote on it tonight. Maybe we can postpone it to something else to kind of look to see, because you know, I've been sitting on this board for four years and every year it's like, what's stamped? It's not even discussed. You know, and this is an important issue, because if a child isn't getting the education that they need in the school system, they should have options, just like our kids, right? If our children aren't getting what they want and they feel like, they feel bullied in our classrooms, or they feel they don't want to be in this, this school system, what is, what's their other choices? To go to private school, right? I mean, it's just, it just, I think it limits us. And if it's, if we're only talking about 5%, it's not a lot of children. So like if we want to be progressives and we want to say that we're, you know, it'll, for me, I just think it's, if somebody wants to take the time and drive all the way here and they want to get a good education and they're willing to do that, I think we should honor that. But I do think there should be some priorities to it, like can't be sports, right? Or get a great quarterback. No, I'm not for that, but you know, I think we should kind of look this through and not just rub a stamp, because I, you know, as Lance was saying, there's a huge opportunity here too. As we're building a new school system for special needs, we talked about that. Why can't we be a leader in special needs? So not getting what they want in other school system, they can bring it into our spaces. And then, you know, that would be something that we'd like to talk about when we do do the school committees, the same ways. That we can, you know, I understand your point about we are small and we're only 700 square feet. Other classrooms are 850. So there are things there, but I just think that I just don't want to see a rubber stamped every year. It's just my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, we'd certainly like to build those programs from a special education perspective, you know, irregardless of whether we're school choice or not. We definitely want to build more of a learning-based program, a therapeutic program, which would offer more for students in Cohasset, but also would, it would stop us from having to go to programs like schools around us that have programs that facilitate the needs of those students who have those situations. So we want to build that regardless, but I get your point. The revenue is something that can help with that.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. And obviously, just to clarify the record, I think you were, of course, just selecting a random school district that does participate in, in school choice and identifying Randolph, you know, not making any commentary, of course, on the random public schools with them at all, but I just, I know that they do participate. And I'm guessing you randomly selected on the list that we have.
Yeah, I agree with that list.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Sainz, do you have any thoughts on this issue?
Um, I would briefly say that I agree with the other committee members that it would be lovely to be a part of something like this. Obviously, facilities do not allow for that right now and it's not a neat, clean math equation. If 10 kids come in and it equals whatever amount of money, they're not coming into the same grade. No, it's not like 10 fourth graders coming in. So we get another fourth grade teacher and then magically have another fourth grade classroom in Deer Hill. So it's not a simple equation. Hopefully, in the future, we can accommodate something like that. And there actually currently are other options. Families can go to charter school, families can go to the tech. Like, there are really great options around us for people who aren't finding a place in their town's community public school and they have other school, you know, there are other school communities that they can join. I've worked in some of them. They're wonderful. So luckily, the choice does exist in our very nearby towns. And hopefully someday we can be a more active part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Sainz. Any additional comments yet? Okay. I have funding, capacity, and student-teacher ratio concerns, and I'm not in favor of school choice. RICO has all the schools at this time. I'd, I'd like to take a vote. We need to, Mr. Kearney, you addressed your issues. We may be able to table it. We have to, if we vote against school choice, have to do that by, by June 1st. So, you know, this is a public hearing. I think it's probably the appropriate forum at which to make a decision for this year. Not like we can't continue the conversation throughout the year about this and consider maybe other options in the future. But I think it's probably appropriate to take a vote on this now. Is there a, is there a motion one way or the other relative to school choice?
Before you do the motion, just a, just a matter of understanding. If we do not vote against it, are we defaulted into it?
I believe so. So are there any motions relative to school choice one way or the other at this point?
I move to not opt in, which may not be the appropriate language to move, but.
Okay, so there's been a motion to opt out of school choice?
Not in is out, yeah.
So obviously, a vote in favor of that motion would opt out of the school choice. We would continue to be a no on that list. Okay? So understanding that motion, is there a second on the floor? Second motion has been made by Ms. Sainz, motion seconded by Mrs. Colari. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes by a vote of four to one. So Dr. Sullivan, we will continue to opt out of the school choice program for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. So that concludes the public hearing on school choice. We need to formally adjourn and then reconvene in the school committee, regular school committee meeting. So is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing on school choice? Motion's made by Ms. Colari. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dial. In favor? Aye. All opposed. Public hearing on school choice adjourned. We'll move right into the school committee meeting. So welcome to anyone who's just coming on board, but I think that we're kind of 20 minutes into it already. So everyone's probably already here, but I would like to formally call the order that you made 11/22 meeting the Cohasset School Committee. Would all members that are present, designate its own role. Call Ms. Colari. Mr. Dial. Mr. Kearney.
Present.
Ms. Sainz.
Present.
I am present. Craig McClellan. All members are present as of 6:19 PM. The meeting is, as always, being streamed live on Facebook, Cohasset 143 TV. We are in person for good now. So you're always welcome to show up, but we are offering a virtual participation solution. So if you are participating virtually via Zoom, then please feel free to utilize the Q and A feature on Zoom to share any comments or thoughts that you might have. So we'll move into the first agenda item, which is public comment. I'm guessing there's no public comments. We kind of just had a public comment section, but, but it doesn't seem like, I mean, you're not listening to the meeting, so we'll give everyone a second or two to do that. If you have any public comment, this section, the agenda is reserved for, for comments or questions or discussion points on or issues or concerns, questions, anything related to something that's not on the agenda. So if your concern relates to something that's on the agenda, please reserve your comment until we arrive at that point in the agenda. Otherwise, please make your comment now, because we won't address something that's not on the agenda once we get into the meeting. So give everyone a few seconds to do that. And if you're here and you'd like to make a comment, but I'm guessing this is just the, mostly the, this, the SSAC.
Yes. Thanks for your patience.
Okay, any comments, Dr. Thompson? Okay, thank you. So we'll move on. And we have, every school committee is very happy meeting, especially the really long ones. But this one is a little bit sad, because it's, it's the last meeting for our vice chairperson, Ashley Colari. And I wanted to take an opportunity to recognize her. I think it's important to do that, especially at the beginning of the meeting, because you know, everyone that serves on these town boards does so in a voluntary capacity without pay. And, you know, I think they are pretty fulfilling roles from time to time. But, you know, it can be a challenge in terms of time management, and I think it takes a lot of dedication and commitment. And I think it's appropriate to recognize people that have served at least a full term or more on these boards. And so I wanted to take an opportunity to, to recognize my friend Ashley, who we will be missing. I was hoping that we could give everyone an opportunity to say a few words if they'd like. You don't have to say anything and just give everyone, I won't even call in the political order, because I don't know who's ready and who's not, but if you'd like to say anything, you know, share some thoughts. I, we do have something to present to Ashley, but I figured I'd do that at the end and let everyone share their thoughts. And then we present her with a little token of our appreciation and our gratitude from the school district. So anyone have any thoughts to share or farewell wishes to Mr. Colari?
I can go first. It's, I, one of the biggest changes with Ashley's departure is going to be, I no longer have a C in front of me and E, I just, look, and I'm going to have to go first. It's a good practice for me to go first on these comments. So I want to thank you for your participation. I know it's a big deal. And I think you brought a lot of great perspective to this group. Your input was always very thoughtful, always very considerate. And I think you made our decision-making better. So I very much appreciated you on this and will miss you very much when you're gone. But you'll still be around town, so totally gone.
It's not moving.
I'll miss you on Wednesday afternoons slash evenings slash nights, such almost early mornings.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Anyone else?
Yeah, you know, I would say, what are we going to do without you? You know, I can see you not only a colleague, a friend, and I just wanted to thank you and Paul and your others, because, you know, it is, it is something that takes a lot from your family to do. You know, it's hundreds of meetings, over three years, hundreds. And you've brought such good energy to this town, to inclusion and making sure that everybody. I felt like anytime I, me especially, I don't know what I'm going to do if I start to freak out. I'd call Ashley, some of the things that, and it would be like, no, we can do it this way and we can do it that way. So it's, I'm still probably going to call you to vent a little bit. And we're going to miss you. You've done so much for this district. You know, we're in a good place because of all your hard work. And again, we're just going to miss you. I have, we have another token. We appreciate you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Kearney?
Think about comparing thoughts, but I guess the reason I joined the committee is because you were on it. And I thought, hey, you can do it. I can do it. And then we all went through a pandemic together, and I'm not sure any of us feel like we could do it, but we did it. And I think that any committee in town that has gone through this pandemic together is probably closer than most because of what we've gone through. And it really stinks that we can't hang out outside of our committee, because it's a quorum and that's not legal. So maybe someday the finalists can all hang out and not talk about school at all.
Would have to be through Zoom.
Yes, I will ask Craig to call us to order and we can have a casual conversation that is non-school-related. But I think that.
Two at a time, hang out with Ashley. That works. Although maybe not if we don't have someone that's successor.
We'll rotate at Sandy Beach this summer. Yeah, thank you for all you've done and, and thanks to your family. Paul fist bumped me when I picked you up this evening, because they're getting you back now. And that's some really precious time you've given to the town and to the schools and to the community. So thank you.
For sure. I don't know if Dr. Sullivan would like to say anything. I know you've worked with Ashley for a long time too, so.
It's been such a pleasure and an honor to work with you. I think to your point, the pandemic shoved us all together to learn, to work together. And I think that we've done a nice job with that and that's a lot to do with you. Polysty would never look as beautiful as it does without your organization pulling us together and getting through. You drove us and that's really important. But it's just been a pleasure to have someone who really believes in inclusiveness and making sure that that things are fair for all. Doesn't mean it's the same, just that everybody gets what they need. So it's been a pleasure. I'm going to miss it.
Yeah, I echo all of that, but I'll also say, you know, when I think of you, Ashley, I think of, Cohasset is such an amazing place to live, to work, to go to school. And one of the reasons I came to Cohasset was because of that, but also the belief that Cohasset has a lot of potential to be something even better. And what that means to me in a lot of ways is the idea of inclusivity, is the idea of making sure that everybody individually grows to be the best person they can be, and of course, the best student, athlete, musician, whatever it may be. Your belief in, in what's good in everyone and what this town can be is what kept me centered throughout the years that, you know, I've worked with you. And I really, I feel in a lot of ways, you were one of the reasons that this committee has a great heart. And I think you could see that in everything you did as a committee, because you were very thoughtful and you were at the root of all that. So that's, that, just know that you made a tremendous impact on me as I tried to, you know, lead in an appropriate way throughout the pandemic. I don't know, Sue, if you want to add anything to any of your change.
We're going to miss you. I'm going to miss my right-hand person up there. But you've brought, you've just brought so much, my short time here, you've brought so much insight to this district. You've brought so much to the table. Like Beth said, everything was in the fannus and you see always the good sides and the potential of what this, this town can be, which is why I'm here. It's a great, it's a great town and I can see that it's got such potential going forward. And you always brought that to the table here, so we are going to miss you.
And one of the, when I was a principal, I always used to talk to my staff and the students about being audacious. And I used to talk about audacious moments, and it was audacious moments that happened in the classroom, audacious moments that happened, students achieving something great. Your belief system is making sure that we do things that are audacious, and I really respect that about you. So thank you for that. That's something that will, will last here. So that's a great thing.
Well, yeah, a couple of things to say before we present it to you. So I think that every once in a while, you encounter someone that, that has a pretty large-scale impact on you. And, you know, I think for me, Ashley, you have been someone that I think has, has had that impact. I think you've made me a better person, better lawyer. And it sounds funny to say, but you know, I, Ashley and I have, you know, we agree on a lot of things, I think, but we also have a lot of different views on things, which is what I, what I love a lot about interacting with Ashley, both a personal and a professional level. And, you know, you're a really thought-provoking person. You, I love how open-minded you are. And even when you disagree, you listen to everyone's points. Sometimes I was able to convince you of things that I thought. Oftentimes, you were more readily able to convince me of that your perspective was the correct one. But it's really well thought out, and I think that you always have your eyes on the long game and the long-term consequences. You're a very deliberate, highly intelligent person. I really, I'm telling you, I think one of the, one of the best things I've, I can take away from the school committee when I eventually stopped doing it will be the working relationships I had with, with certainly everyone in this room, but you as well and you primarily. I mean, I remember the first time I met you when we were both running for it and you came to my office to talk to me. And when, looking back on it, I think you were just getting me to make sure I was in the lunatic. But from that, but that was our first great conversation. We've had a lot since. And I've also, you know, I think I've gained a great personal friend. I mean, I consider her and her husband, Paul, close friends now and lucky to know you guys. We've gone, you know, schemed together, we've gone on trips together. So it's been really fulfilling. So on a personal level, you know, I've loved working with you. On a more school committee general level, I think you've had some major contributions here to the school committee. I know that one of your major or primary reasons for running was the, you know, maybe lack of awareness and lack of communication from the school committee to the stakeholders. And you have absolutely taken great strides in that. I think that the school committee now stands, you know, having had you serve on it for three years, it stands in a much more sort of notable public posture than perhaps it did. And I'm not trying to besmirch the efforts of anyone that might have come before, because I think that, you know, the pandemic lent itself to that as well. But, but Ashley, you have certainly dedicated a lot of time and effort to making that happen with your, you know, creating this communication subcommittee and your, your updates that you post on Facebook, you know, your, your outlines and summaries of the meetings. I mean, these things matter to people and I know that people really appreciate your perspective on the committee. Policy, Dr. Collins mentioned that you put a lot of hours into making sure that our policy was revamped. That's half of our purview, and I know it's not done, but you've made a lot ahead of way on that. And you obviously helped lead the district through the pandemic, which is a major thing. Mrs. Sainz mentioned that, but it is something that, you know, I mean, it doesn't, it's no small thing. That was a real challenge and, and your leadership was key throughout that. And finally, which I think was, is your major contribution to the school district, is, is your position on equity and cultural competency. And that is something that I think that you, you impressed upon me as a, as a major area for improvement in the district. And I think that that's a very, very important, important facet of your involvement and contribution to school committee. So with that said, I want to present to you a little token of our appreciation, sort of related to my last point. This is a plaque to, to, Mrs. Colari, I'm not always in this picture, so sorry for those of you at home. The camera's kind of difficult to mention, but, I mean, manage. This is a plaque to Mrs. Colari. It says, "Presented to Ashley Colari in recognition of her distinguished service to the Cohasset Public Schools as a champion of equity and human kindness. Your invaluable contributions to our school district will continue to have a positive impact on the entire school community for years to come. School committee member from 2019, 2022 and school committee vice chairperson 2020, 2022."
Thank you.
It's supposed to be navy blue, but it's in black when I got it, so it's too late to turn that. All right. Well, would you like to say any parting remarks?
I would like to apologize to all of you that had listened. I'm as outspoken as I am. I'm not really, I'm happy being the center of attention. I really appreciate all of the very kind things you said. I feel so proud to be a part of this committee. I do feel like it's a really special group. And maybe that is a function of the pandemic and us needing to work really closely together. I feel like it's a really, really special group and I am so sorry that I'm leaving, but I, I do, like, my kids are six and nine. They're like Paul said, all the hours that I've been putting in. And I feel grateful to have done it and I feel so, so. It's really meaningful to me that our district has such an amazing leadership team. And I just am so proud to have been a part of all that has happened over the last three years. So thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. All right. Well, let's continue on in our last meeting here. She has a few more votes left in her. We'll move right into the superintendent's report, and I would turn the meeting over at this time to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
Great. Thank you, Chair McClellan. I will, I'm very proud and I want to thank the families and the student advisory council for your patience waiting through our hearing. But I am incredibly proud of this group of students. I know, of course, their parents talk to you and they're very well-kept. You know, I had spoken of the word audacious for, in a positive way, for creating change, doing great things in your particular capacity, Ashley, and making sure that the, the committee was, making sure that the committee was looking at the big picture and what we could do to make things great in the district. And the students that are, we're about to introduce and thank are extremely audacious and will do wonderful things moving forward and really represent the best of what I feel is about Cohasset. When I formed the committee, the main goal is, is and was to create student voice. And their voices have been heard loud and clear by me throughout many very difficult and trying situations. It has their, their thoughts on many topics have helped me bring some light to student perspective to the leadership team and there, those who have had the opportunity and we're, right now, it's Jenna Mercedes and Jake to be our school liaisons. And all of you hopefully stay on the committee who aren't graduating. And we're sorry that you're graduating, but happy for you, Jenna and Jake. Will have the opportunity to be a school committee liaison. And your voice, I know I speak for the committee, is really listened to. And you do have a, have a powerful impact on the perspectives that the committee is considering for a variety of decisions that impact the, the school community. So this is just an opportunity for us to thank you formally for the work you've done and congratulate you, knowing that there's a lot of work to be done. And what your, the job is on the student advisory committee is changing and it's very malleable and it's very up to what the students feel is important, but it's all centered around student voice and needs to stay there. And I also just want to thank you for realizing that your role has with it a lot of responsibility. And none of you look at it as just your voice. You're also talking to students. And you may present something that you believe in, but you're also presenting what your fellow classmates believe in too, and that's equally important. So I just very much thank you for that. So we're going to be acknowledging you with some certificates, and I'll let Dr. Collins kind of run that part of it. We'll have you come on up and get the, actually, why don't I hand it to you?
Yeah, that's public.
Yeah. And I know that some folks who, who aren't able to be here, but maybe, I think it was a flight. You come up just to the podium here so we can see you and we'll give you the, just kind of line up.
All right. We'll start with our youngest members.
I can just give it as they. So I know Charlie's not here. Charlie's not.
Right. So Amara Pierce.
Amara is not here.
John Kearney isn't here.
You should grab her.
And then.
Yeah, so we can just go.
I just want to make sure that their names are recognized. But we do have, we have Nathan.
Esther.
Esther, thank you.
Yep. Nathan, come on up. Let's hear it for Nathan.
I'll get a picture of all of you.
Yeah, we got a picture.
All right, we have Ella Lynch.
Oh, we're there. That's why. Thank you.
And we have Bruce Johnson. These are both. I think I've been on the committee for two years, so they're ending their second year plus, which is wonderful. And then we have one junior, and that's from St. Samuel. They've been here since the beginning, three years. So, yep, three years. Congratulations. And then we have our, we have Jake Fraprito and Fraprito, they do.
Well, we.
Oh, sorry. And then we have Jenna. Good meeting and three years of faith also with us. So it's an impressive group and not a shy group, which I really, really love. Really, and I mean that in a really wonderful way. They share their, their thoughts, their, their ideas and they're not afraid to do that. And that's so important because they're advocates, not for them, just for themselves, which is your point too, for all of the people there who've been, for the students here. Cohasset, and actually all the students.
And I would say like in every forum that we've had in class over the last few years, it's been really difficult subjects to talk about. And that's been the same way from a student perspective. You should feel very proud of the way they treat each other as we discussed sometimes some differing opinions. It's just a fabulous group that is clearly destined for a greater group of success. Thank you, parents, for everything you've done to foster that.
Stay late, so.
Well, they, they provided really important feedback to us, you know, and it's something that I think when I first came on, we, we didn't really have. It was something we, we instituted or re-instituted. And it's been a really, really great element. And, and, and I mean, as, as Jenna and Jay and Mercedes will attest, I mean, I really get, you know, very excited to hear their updates and hear their perspectives on things. It gives us, especially when we're in the pandemic, it was especially helpful to hear from, you know, our high school representatives at the meetings about how things were going, what we thought. But at the, at the extra school committee meetings that are, that Dr. Sullivan holds, that I come to every once in a while when I can, because they're, it's sort of awkward time in the afternoon for, for someone working. But it's really, really interesting to hear their perspectives on things and it really, it, it helps to have that student insight. I mean, obviously, as the adults that are, you know, leading the district, it's incumbent upon us to, to make the decisions for them. But, you know, it's important to have their input incorporated into those decisions. So, and, and you all do this, you know, it's volunteer time, sometimes you're balancing. I know, you know, Jenna was always running up to sports and, you know, she's competing with that. And just to name one that popped into my mind, but, you know, I know that you have other things going on. It's after school, it's, it's an extra sort of add to all of your, to all of your school commitments, which I know from listening to you at the, at the meetings, at, at both the school committee meetings and the SSAC meetings. You have a lot of, you know, time management challenges already as it is, so, and we'd love to listen to you guys at the meeting. So we hope the ones that aren't graduating are going to continue. And the ones that are graduating, we wish you the best of luck. Jenna, I don't think we ever had, well, is she going to give an update in a minute?
She'll do an update today.
All right, so, so we'll wait, we'll wait for that. But I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the committee, guys, it's really awesome. Thank you for doing that.
It's not a life sentence, but I hope you do stay out.
Yeah, I also want to reiterate too, like a lot of things, the gym, isn't the gym, that, that's kind of, those are the things, you just plant the seeds, you know? That's the thing, like, I've been on the committee for four years and there's things that we've accomplished that I thought never could be accomplished. You planted seeds and that's.
I just want to give you. All of you kind of come down. Wait, Jenna and Jake, get your certificate fits off.
Soon we go time.
All right, I don't want to ask you. Yes, go right in. Thank you. I know if anyone, yeah, I want to be in there.
We'll all get in there, right?
Actually, I'm going to have you go, everybody goes that way.
The cold. I think we'll stop.
No, you're good, you're good.
It is cold, but it's kind of refreshing when you, yeah, it's usually hot.
I know, how's that work?
But I've got chairs. Okay, ready? One, two, three, and one, two.
I'm doing yours. No, I'm, I'll take you.
Yeah, this one takes better pictures than the iPhone. I'm not an iPhone guy, so we don't know what to do. Exactly, if I have a computer. Thank you, guys, that was obviously. Thank you, brother. Take care of them. Thanks for taking over, guys. You guys can come over.
All right, well, let's, let's move right into, let's, let's move right into Jenna's final update. Because we're already.
Yes.
All right, so let's move right into that.
Okay, Jenna, I'll let you.
All right, so I'll keep my last update because I have a lot of things to say. But the past two weeks at CHS have been kind of like, um, not, I mean, pretty stressful for especially juniors and some sophomores because there's been AP testing the past two weeks and I'm very happy to say that today has been the last day. It was AP Spanish and AP Bio and I was very happy to get AP Spanish out of the way, that one was a stressor, but I'm glad that's done. And I know all the students are feeling super accomplished because last year and the year before has been kind of tough with the AP testing as of COVID. And last year, a lot of students felt a little bit underprepared because of like the hybrid learning and it was just, it was a hard environment to go home and study in, so it's been good to have everything normal this year and everyone in person with no masks and it just felt very normal, which is great. And then, so for seniors perspective, tomorrow's college T-shirt day. I don't know if you guys all know about that and that's just a day that I've always like, I'm always so excited to see the seniors wearing their college T-shirts as another classroom. And so it's kind of a surreal moment that I have my T-shirt laid out on my bed for tomorrow. It's just like, got to take it all in, probably some tears will be shed tomorrow, but we'll see.
Where are you going?
Forward at university.
All right.
So very excited about that. And then one more week after this week and then three days and then fall on Thursday, 26. Yeah, and I know we're all really excited for our week of activities coming up until graduation. So through the third, I believe, then graduation's on the court. So we're all excited to go bowling and have some fun. Yeah, we're going to Penn's bowl as agreed and lots of walkthrough practice runs for graduation and class night. So looking forward to that. Yeah, the, the past month has been really bittersweet for me and everything's kind of hitting home. And I just want to say thank you so much for letting me be a part of this committee because it truly has taught me a lot about what I want to do in college and how I value speaking to all of you guys and how I take pride in public speaking. So I think I'm going to go, I decided to go under the communications route in college because I just feel like this is something that I really like to do. I want to continue like being surrounded by people and talking in environments like this. So it just means a lot to me to be a part of this and I truly have felt like my voice has meant a lot to all of you guys, which is, it's just makes me really happy to like see a difference in the community and know I can like tell my friends, I'm like, hey, guys, what do you think about this? It's really super attendant, but I can't. Everyone comes to me with information like that and I don't know, it's just great to see actual work being done in the community, knowing that I've had a part in it throughout my four years or three years. So I just want to say thank you, that's my most important, um, part of it.
Okay, thank you, Jenna. Any, anyone have any questions for Jenna?
I just want to say that I think you're doing fabulous things, communications, congratulations, it's really exciting. I want to encourage you to, to participate in lots of activities if you can, you know, if it feels like the right balance for you. I know for me, I was also in communications in college and one of the most valuable experiences I had as far as public speaking and interacting with different people was a student group that I was a student leader in. So, so take those opportunities as they come because they're really important also.
Thank you.
Thank you, St. Eric. It does not surprise me that Miss Clairey was a student leader in Andrew. One bit, not at all. And I'll echo, you'd be great. You have, you have a great foundation, your speaking skills are wonderful. So you have a leg up on, on people may not be doing as, as often as you. So I think communications will be good. I went to the youth communications and ended up as a journalist. And it's a really rewarding profession, especially if you want to be the one that's like, hey, super junior said this, you know, and you're the first go-to. So it sounds like it'll be a rewarding career for you, so best of luck.
Yeah, I also, it's, it's, student voice is so important. We, we do listen and it, I think it's, it's good because it's a collaborative approach. They're, they're giving us the insight to hear some of the, especially during the pandemic, some of the mask issues that the kids were coming through. You just brought that to like what we're doing and thank you.
As I said the first night you spoke, it's pretty wild that I knew you at the Carrot House and you were this tiny little person with this tiny voice. And now it's just so cool that we're both here and you're a grown-up person with a really strong voice, having an incredible impact on our town and our school community. And I think it's going to be awesome seeing you, I mean, I'm not going to like go fully to college.
Throw lines.
Seeing you grow up and like literally seeing you in nursery school and now graduating is just so cool and such a wonderful part of what Cohasset is that, that we can see each other in these huge, I'm like getting really emotional. I don't know, Jenna. Just seeing like these huge, huge steps in everyone's life. It's so cold in here.
Oh, man. It is cold in here. I get smartened.
She made me call, oh, there we go.
That's amazing. How can I follow that? I'll just say, Jenna, I'll just say that.
It is cold.
You are an absolutely wonderful human. I think I told your mom at the soccer games, I brought my daughter to see you play and we'll miss seeing you play. But I've told your mom how, how awesome a kid you are and I have no doubt you'll have nothing but, you know, absolute success in everything you do. So best of luck in the Big Apple and we wish you the best, yeah. All right, that was amazing. That was amazing. That was the best send-off, by the way, for any SSAC member. No one has ever listened, evoked tears before, okay? It's amazing.
Thank you, Jenna.
It's great, Lloyd. All right, well, let's move on.
Thank you. Bring us back, mention a couple of just exciting things that were happening.
Sure, just, just don't make it too emotional.
Well, we did have a couple, we did have some celebrations, obviously, last week was National Teachers Day. It was Teachers Week, but within that we had, and you know, obviously teachers do so much for our kids and our community. We had, within that, we did have nurses, uh, School Nurses Day, which we, which we celebrated. Although I was told actually that it could be this week, the School Nurses Day, but we'll celebrate them again. If it ends up being this week. And then we had Cafeteria, I should say Food Service Workers Hero Day, which was wonderful. We were able to acknowledge our, our food service workers who do so much to provide nutritious meals for our, our students each day. So that, those were nice celebrations. We had Deer Hill was really, had a wonderful week with a variety of activities. They raised money for the Ukraine, they had Ukraine Day. I used to have many students dressing in the Ukrainian colors. We had May 4th, May the 4th, be with you. You get it? Where a lot of students dressed as stalwart characters. It was actually awesome. It was really neat to see, you know, obviously you have the, it's a slayer sort of bun hairdo, but it was, it was great. It was a great spirit day for them. And then the whole Deer Hill community came together and worked at the New England Warehouse to not only raise money, they raised over $25,000, but to, to pack meals for the Ukraine.
Yeah, yeah.
And there were, what was the stat on it?
So 42,000, so 42,552 meals were packaged, which equals about $14,893 worth of product.
Which is amazing and that was the whole community and I think there were over 160 volunteers. So it just shows you the type of community we're from. So it's, you know, amazing. We had Mass Dot worked with our director of, I should say, our supervisor of transportation and our school resource officer, Officer Taylor, to provide a really engaging, I said, not surprisingly, but it was nice engaging presentation around bike safety. So a lot of great things. Next update, I'll talk more specifically about the transitioning we have happening between second and third grade, fifth and sixth grade, eighth and ninth grade. And you'll see that highlighted in this week's newsletter for the community to see. But I'm very proud of the work that we're doing to make sure those transitions are more comprehensive and providing a really smooth landing for us to, to the next levels. So that's been happening in full force, which is a wonderful thing. You really need that to, to get our students ready for the next year. So that's it by way of update. And Chair McCollum, is it okay if I switch and move to the?
Let's go right into it.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And I want to thank our Director of Technology and Digital Learning, Lisa Raden, and obviously one of our amazing teachers, Adam Sasso. Teaches technology for their patients awaiting through, through all of this. But also for everything they do to make technology special for our students. You know, I've had the pleasure of seeing Adam work with his students. He's a tremendous teacher, also from Cohasset. So all of this hopefully rings true to you too. I'm sure this, one of the reasons you, you know, you stay here and work in this great town. But Adam and Lisa, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the new offerings, some of the things that they're doing with coding. And I am very excited to, to introduce Lisa, who can take it over.
Yeah, welcome, Mr. Sasso, Ms. Brad, welcome.
And Lydia, we really, we're going to try and party, not to me. Okay, great. So, um, thank you very much for this opportunity to spotlight really.
The students, of course.
Mr. Sasso and the students. Today is really about, you know, the students in Mr. Sasso's class sharing a little bit about what they've learned and what they've done and giving you the opportunity to answer any questions. Mr. Sasso, as you know, this year he teaches interrupted tech and coding to grades nine through 12 and web design to grades nine through 12 as well. And then he, as part of a committee earlier in the year, really took the lead in crafting two new courses, computer science courses for next year. And I know they've already been presented to this committee and, you know, about the whole process. But I just want to thank Mr. Sasso publicly for really taking a lead on that. And, you know, he really took into account the students' interests as well as, of course, the digital learning and computer science standards. Evaluating the standards that currently teaches, identifying any gaps, partially met or not met. And, and really doing a lot of research about what other offerings are out there that we could provide to students. So really excited about the classes he'll be teaching next year in addition to what he taught this year. So, but tonight is really about celebrating the work that he and his students have been doing this year in interrupted tech and coding. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sasso and the students and I.
Thank you, Ms. Brad. Thanks, everybody, for having us tonight. Yeah, I've been teaching coding and technology, I teach a couple of different classes right now. Coding and Technology, I've been teaching for nine years at Cohasset. And it's really only in the last five years or so that we've, that I've moved into doing a lot more coding. Hardware and software and kind of computer science principles, so, but we have sections of both. We do a chunk of coding to start the class off for a couple of weeks and then we move into taking computers apart and identifying inside them, talking about networking and how the internet functions and all that stuff. But we're here tonight to talk about the coding stuff. So we teach, I teach JavaScript coding and most of the students come in with little to no experience at all. So we start with a very basic kind of coding, how to create different shapes, how to color them. And then move on to get a little bit more advanced and create animations or interactive elements, which means like, if you click on a certain key or the mouse, something changes on the screen. if you click on a certain key or the mouse, something changes on the screen. And the skillset of the kids over the past five years has really gotten better. And even some of them said they've never done it before. They just seem to get it a little more quickly nowadays. But the three students I brought up tonight kind of represent three tiers in terms of the experience they have. So Alex, who's in the back, Alex already came in, and he's probably by far the most experienced in terms of coding of all the students I've had so far. He has an interesting story about how with the pandemic, he took upon himself to go onto YouTube and watch some videos and learn it himself. Dean Livermore had a bit of experience, but a lot of interest. He's a self-obsessed gamer. He's really good at gaming. He's interested in technology and he took up running a domain. Catherine Brisbane didn't have any experience with coding, but ended up doing some really amazing stuff in class. And maybe at the beginning was a little intimidated by it, but really, really jumped in at first. So again, it's really about them tonight. So they each have a project they're going to show you. This was the big coding project in class after we did a couple of weeks of building skills. I have a final project, final coding project, where each student needs to create a program with at least 150 lines of JavaScript code and have either an animation or an interactive element. And it's a process that's really interesting because coding, all the software that we use, all the apps that we use, it's never just one person sitting at a computer for a year coding it themselves. It's a team effort where problems pop up all the time. And it's a matter of saying, okay, this is what we want. How do we get there? Let's kind of work, see what we want the final process to be in, the slow steps to get to that. While doing, sort of running into a lot of problems usually having to debug code. So kids work together a lot in the course and I encourage them to do that before calling me over and telling them how to do something. And say, we'll work with your neighbor, see if you guys can figure it out together. So Alex and Dean did a lot of that because they took the class together last term. Catherine took the intro course when, and Alex and Dean are freshmen. Catherine took the intro course when she was a freshman and then she took the advanced course this year as a junior. So it's a lot of fun to see students with little to no experience start something completely new to them and, you know, see where they end up in two months and the great things that they create. So Dean now has created some games that they're gonna show us here. Catherine created a really cool picture of Notre Dame Cathedral. And I think we'll take one of the time out to pull up for us and present his.
Welcome, Alex.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. So I'm gonna open up my game here. And so we actually used Khan Academy, which has a, pretty much an engine for, to make these games in JavaScript. And so my game, it's a maze game. So you can actually select your avatar, right, by these different colors. So there's pink, blue, and green. And there is lives. And the goal of the game is, so say I have this pink avatar, right? I want to bring this pink avatar through the maze all the way down so I can get to this goal down here without hitting the walls, which would reset me or hitting these obstacles. And so you can actually increase the speed of these obstacles if you want the game to be harder. As you can see, they speed up. Or I can decrease them. If I want to slow it down. And I just want to show you guys a piece of code that is really special to me because it just took me so much time. And so right here, I'll just select it. So right here, what this is trying to say, is it's saying this moving obstacle right here or anything, because they're just repeat statements. So if I collide with this obstacle right here, it'll just reset me. But the really hard part about it is that it creates basically a box around this yellow moving obstacle. And that's just really hard to engineer because you're not actually looking at this hit box. You're just trying to create it out of thin air. And so just trying to get it to follow the actual moving yellow rectangle is really hard.
That must have taken some time.
Yeah. There's a lot of hours that you take into just trying to figure out why something won't work. And eventually getting it to work is just feels really nice.
Yeah, it's really impressive.
Favorite part, just finally getting something to work after all the time you put into it, finally having a finished product. Because when you start with it, you really don't know where you're gonna go or what you're gonna do with it. But in the end, it's just a really good feeling.
But Alex, can you beat your own game?
That's what I was.
I can because I actually made a cheat type.
You didn't tell me about it when you had me tested. When you had me tested, the obstacles were moving way faster.
So explain.
So the cheat that I actually have, I'm not quite sure where it is in the code because there's a few hundred lines of this. But regardless, I'm gonna choose my avatar and then using the arrow keys, I can actually move where I'm going. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna wait for this obstacle to pass. Oh, I cleared my avatar. All right. So I'm gonna wait for this obstacle to pass and then I can go down to the right. And if I click down, it actually allows me to pass.
That's breakdownly travel.
Alex, did this give you a sort of a rhetorical question, but did it give you a perspective on bigger coding projects and what they must go through to design them and the trials? And it must have given you tremendous perspective.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm doing here is, it's not necessarily complex based on what other people do, especially in bigger fields like designing a social media website, where there's just so much going on in the backend. But yeah, definitely.
Yeah, that's great.
Awesome. Thanks, Alex. That's awesome. Great job.
So for my game, I decided to remake the classic game Frogger. And so, um, you have your frog can go up and down, you can hit my cars. So I think most people, what people don't understand about coding, that is a language. And like other languages, you have to make your sentences. And so everyone's sentence, let's say I want to make a rectangle. So the rectangle, which is rect, integration. But that's kind of a boring sentence. The rectangle is not really a sentence. So I have to say things about the rectangle. I want to say that it's at 100 on the X coordinate and 100 on the Y coordinate. And I want to say that it's 50 wide and 50 tall. Then I end my sentence, and then my sentence saves a semicolon, which is like a period of coding. And now I have my rectangle. But tend to need a predicate. And so so now that I have my predicate in terms of this variable, which is, oh, I just chose it because it's easy. I can make my sentence, my rectangle move by changing the exponent to OP. And then going, say, OP equals OP plus 20.
Do you need your semicolon to three eleven?
So I need to move more outside the So now when I reset my code, you can see my rectangle is leaning very fast. So I have my sentence now. I have a rectangle and it's going to the right. It's getting out of there. And so like other languages, when you learn a language, it opens up many financial opportunities. You can trade with people outside your time zone. So except if I learn Spanish, I can talk to people in Spanish. I can come tour gun in Spain. And coding is just like that. You don't just have, when you learn coding, you don't have to become a coder. You can become a fashion designer to be able to code the programs that allow fashion designers to show their dresses off to the world.
Sure.
And being able to do that coding yourself can one save expense because you don't have to hire someone else to do it for you. And it can give you a better idea of what's possible in coding and how easy it is to do it.
Excellent. That's very impressive.
Thanks for teaching.
Yeah, that was awesome.
Awesome, live-fire coding. But does your game have a cheat as well?
No. I did make the cars a little slow so I could beat it.
Could make the frog very large. There it goes. He's gonna make it. No pressure.
Go, go, go!
We've got all kinds of emotions in here. Don't cry, don't cry. It's all right.
Mr. Sasso will, he will beat my game now, so.
I'll also say Dean, it was a student in the term before Dean's class who created another maze game that I couldn't beat. Said to the class first, like one of the first days, like, someone come up and try this. Dean came up. First time he died, second time he beat all of them. Dean, you're up. Make your own game now.
That's awesome. Well, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now Catherine.
Welcome, Catherine.
Hi, I'm Catherine Brisbane. I'm a junior here at Cohasset High School. And I'd first like to say, like Mr. Sasso mentioned, I've taken one of his classes every year and I plan to take another one next year. I took Internet Check and Coding my freshman year. I was, this is my first quarter here and it's actually new to Cohasset High School. So I was very nervous, but it was one of my most favorite classes freshman year. I did video production last year and then I came back this year for Advanced Tech and Coding. And so my program is not, it's not a really cool video game. It's more of a more elementary code, but I'll pull it up. So I did a JavaScript code of Notre Dame Cathedral right here with some animation in the background. And so just for some original stuff, so all the stuff on the side is my code right here. I had to come up with all of the squares and rectangles and circles and variables for the animation on this. Like I said before, I used a lot of ellipses, which are circles. I had to do a lot of stuff by hand. Because again, like I was saying, I don't really know a lot of cheats to coding. So it was more coming up with how I could kind of smith stuff together. So some of the stuff about the code, if I restarted here, you can see that I have some moving clouds and the sun in the background and then a dragon floating across the screen. And then also if I move the mouse, you can see a leaf moving with it. So those were kind of the, those are kind of the moving elements that I have to it. As you can see, again, like I mentioned before, a lot of this stuff was a little tedious. So all these circles right here, I coded one at a time. Same with these rectangles here. There you can see some of these rectangles right here, these big ones, all made up the body. All made up the body of the cathedral. Farther down here, these rectangles all in a row are these ones right here. And then these animations that you see floating across the background, they're variables out here. So you have to create a variable for each thing and you have to add that to your function. So that's how it moves across the screen. You can see X, Y, Z went through Q, I think. And then further down here, you can see that's the image code right here. So that's how I get the dragon to move across the screen as well as this leaf to follow right here. And then that's how the dragon goes across and then a leaf here. And this kind of required on my part, I feel like a lot of creativity because it took me a while to figure out how to use a lot of stuff. Again, like, I'm not, I can't manipulate a lot of stuff because I don't know how. So I use a lot of my student resources, I use Mr. Sasso. And being able to figure out how I can manipulate just a line to make a part out of windowpane kind of was really interesting to me and I definitely enjoyed it. So.
It's wonderful.
Do you think you'll continue it next year?
Oh, absolutely. I'm coming back for web design.
Oh, great. Good for you. Yeah.
I'm back in the classroom.
So is this the second coding class you take with Mr. Sasso?
Yeah, so this year I took Advanced Tech and Coding.
Can you talk a little bit about how your skills have advanced from one class to where we see this? Just to get a perspective on sort of your growth?
Absolutely. So freshman year, we started off, we usually use the same program on Khan Academy. And then also code.com, which I noticed used in the younger schools to teach kids about coding. So especially from freshman year to now, I've noticed a huge difference in the ease of programming and how I came about it. So freshman year, it was kind of hard to figure out. You had to figure out different variables and stuff like that. But coming into junior year, I knew a lot of what went into it and I kind of used that to help me create more detailed stuff. So freshman year, I'm not sure what picture I created that I know is a lot less detailed. This time I had kids in my class who were a lot of help. I had a lot of friends. And I also had a lot of time to figure out what I wanted to do and how I was gonna do it. And had a lot of class periods to kind of workshop what I wanted to do and problem solve.
Great. That's, that's good. Yeah, that's, it must be very nice to see your own skills progressing. Something that's so complex.
Yeah, it was. I mean, it's a huge, I think I wouldn't consider myself a coder, but I mean, I definitely thought I improved and I had a great time doing it. So.
I think you really enjoy it. Yeah.
I do. Yeah, it was really fun. And again, like the creativity involved with it, I had a lot of fun with that. So like even adding all these little rectangles was fun because I had to figure out like how far apart they had to be and to be like exactly symmetrical and all this stuff like that. So it was really fun.
It seems like you probably look forward to that class every time.
Yeah. Coding, man? I'm like stuffing bio.
Thank you for inspiring the students. Continue taking your classes. This is a wonderful place.
Well, as you said, I went to school here too. And when I was in school, it was late 90s. I had a very creative side to me, but I didn't, I wasn't good with a paintbrush and I didn't play an instrument. But I knew I had to get my creativity out some way and, you know, I ended up going to film school and looking at that. Following that career path until I, you know, became more tech-heavy and kind of got into the coding part. But I think it's great that we have the opportunity for our students to express their creativity in a lot of different ways.
Sure. That's great. And patience, right? I can't say it. My computer's screaming. Shaking, love. It's a lot of ideating too, you know, coming up and trying something and failing and trying it again, right?
They're all three of them. And they did such a wonderful job, but it kind of made it look easy. But a lot of time goes into, you know, even each line of code. And I think it just speaks to the resilience that you, they learn, you know, to really stick out a problem. And it can come down to that one semicolon, right, that you just missed. You're looking at it, why can't this work? So I just really appreciate that, you know, problem solve, work together also to, to really stick with.
Yeah, I think Dean and Alex went a lot faster than you. They worked together, they got through it and eventually it was like, okay, we got that.
That's good.
That obstacle fixed.
That's nice. It's good on a lot of different levels.
Thanks, guys.
No tears?
You could put this into a montage.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
All right. So the last thing on the superintendent board is student services form planning?
It's getting colder.
It's, it's kind of colder.
I think it's getting colder.
Well, we're not moving. It's the same temperature. It's not getting warmer.
It feels like it's getting colder.
So for student service forum planning, I mean, again, sort of standing, I'm just sort of thinking about it. But, and we've had a bunch of conversations about it. I think the intention is to provide a forum where, you know, it's informative, but also it seeks to elicit some constructive feedback. You know, we just need to be cognizant of the fact that feedback needs to sort of stay in the general realm and not in the specific. Because, you know, people aren't able to weigh confidentiality and so.
We want to make sure we have transparent, open conversations, but we do have to just respect the individual confidentiality.
You know, the purpose of the, I just, you know, I wanted to, the purpose of it isn't, it's not like a living brochure. That is part of it just to let, you know, anyone that's not in that realm yet or in that world doesn't really know a lot about it. That know, you know, where the resources are and what the student services process involves and department involves. But when we do these things, and this is the first time, so people, I feel like are gonna need to, you know, retain, you know, or approach it with an open mind. You know, I hope that, you know, we can improve on any process that we start for the first time. But, you know, I think the, the, the objective behind any of these things is to get feedback. get feedback and to see where there is room for improvement and what things are working.
Right.
So we, we are seeking to do that. Um, and it just with this, when it comes to special education, especially related, um, feedback and input, it's just, it's just, you know, we need to be, we need to be careful, um, not to be discussing in a public forum, private, family-specific issues. So, um, that's something that, um, I just wanted to put out there and, um, I know we did, we did talk about maybe getting some written, sort of, um, I don't know, like, uh, written points or, or, you know, concerns or questions or something in advance to, to, so, so people may be able to submit those if, if we have something. So we might be able to provide a more meaningful, um, value-leading response.
Well, we have three surveys that went.
Okay, right.
We have the tiered, um, response.
Tier focus monitoring.
Tier focus monitoring. We had the Linda Robell one, right?
The, uh, well, we had Terry Ham who did the reading, um, the, uh, reading assessment for special education. So we have that survey. And then there's also the surveys that go out with the I E Ps. So there's those.
And there are common themes and, uh, you know, we'll be able to discuss them.
Okay.
And of course, people can, can bring up concerns.
Sure, sure, sure. No, I just, I think that, you know, sometimes it's obviously difficult to be switching gears totally if you don't have any, you know, information ahead of time. It's sometimes hard to provide like a, a really substantive response.
We felt like those three surveys provided us with a lot of data and then it might be redundant to try to do another survey because I think we get the same data because there's.
They've come out.
Each three.
Sorry. But, but they've been fairly recent, so.
Inconsistent.
Inconsistent. So to ask for another survey seemed, to your point, redundant. Um, and we were afraid we'd really get too much, um, too many responses because we've already asked.
And it's the same, same issues coming back over and over.
Yeah.
We have a pretty clear picture.
Alright, so, um, you know, just to reiterate, and I'm always getting this wrong for some reason. It's, it's Wednesday, May 18th, right? Okay, I'm always getting that wrong. So Wednesday, May 18th, uh, at 6:00 PM in this room.
Yes.
Um, we are hosting that student services forum for the first time. So if you have an interest or even have questions or generally wonder about, you know, our student services department at the Co-Hice Public Schools, special education, anything within that realm, please, please, please come and participate. You know, it's, I feel like the event is only as good as the participation. So, um, it's our first time out, so we'll see how it goes. And we'll see everyone.
And how are we advertising for that? So we're gonna advertise it the same way we advertise a school committee meeting. That was the idea to, but I'm open for any, any other ideas that we get folks in here. We're gonna certainly put it out to the community and again, and put it out to the staff, just in the ways we have for a school committee. Um, but if there's another way that the committee feels would be productive to, um, advertise it, we'll do it.
I would volunteer.
I'm gonna put it in my newsletter in a big way, but you know, I mean, I put it in Twitter. I mean, it's, I'm game for anything you all feel would be.
I'll check and see if the digital signs are available.
Those work. So, I mean, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's just, you know, a lot of town stuff that's been advertised. So, um, I'll just bother them till they put it up like I usually do, I guess.
Well, if they, if they don't listen, if there's something they're competing with, it is what it is.
No, I think because town meeting and other stuff has passed, I feel like we have a nice little window right here. I'll just.
Okay.
And they're very helpful and supportive.
Well, we'll send out, I mean, we'll send, you know, written communications about it and send in the newsletter and.
I look forward to it. I think, I think it's gonna be a, a really productive discussion that will lead us in, you know, other directions.
We have one question.
Okay, great.
Captain Muir, boarding Red Gate Lane, what are the common themes that have been raised that will be discussed next week at the forum?
Well, I would actually defer that to, um, our director of student services, Mrs. Sawalka, to discuss at the forum. I think that's important. I, I don't have this with me.
Yeah.
So I, I defer to her on that. She's just not here to present that. I think that's part of the forum.
I'm wondering though, like any good agenda, could we have some of the major themes listed? You know, so that if someone feels like there's something missing, they could reach out beforehand?
So yes, but remember those themes are derived from surveys that i- isn't just one individual saying something. There's themes over time. So like, I mean, we could certainly put out an agenda, but to add to it would be just adding an individual concern, which we can certainly do, but I would think the individual concern would come at the meeting.
Yeah, let's, I think that's the right way to deal with that, but I do, you know, I understand why Mr. Muir's asking that. So, um, and I understand you don't have the information in front of you, so you don't want to say something that's incorrect. But why don't we create an agenda and we send that out in an email communication saying, hey, these are the items that we're talking, that we're thinking and talking about. So people know what their, what, what, what was on the sort of docket, so it's.
And I do feel like it would be valuable if that is shared ahead of time and people have time to think. Oh, wow, something I, I talk about with my peers all the time is this. And then that can be emailed to our committee and to Mr. Sawalka, you know, just like when Mrs. Owen sends us the finance report and then says, please get in touch ahead of time so I can prepare my answers. And we want to have valuable answers.
Right.
And I think that oftentimes, one person speaking up with a concern is not necessarily an individual concern. It just happens to be that person representing the concerns of others.
Yeah, and in the way some of our organization is planned, I think it's great. It is, is more, uh, on the, along the lines of a SWOT or strengths, uh, what we need to work on, opportunities. Um, so that would be something that we could put in an agenda. So people would know that here's what we're hearing from the community in these surveys in terms of what, what are the strengths right now of the student service department? What are some of the things we need to work on?
Yeah.
And some of the opportunities.
I also think as a, as busy, working parents, if we see an agenda that has some, some speaking points on it and we feel they're valuable to us, we're more likely to show up and participate rather than just a vague title like school choice and no one shows up, you know? Like, if you know what's being talked about, I'm gonna set aside time and block it out to go be a part of that.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's fair. So, so Mrs. Muir, yes, we will let you know. I think that makes sense. And I understand why you want to know what the topics are. Um, we will absolutely provide an agenda so people know what direction we're moving in and I'm, I don't want that to like restrict discussion if people have concerns that they want to bring up that again, are not family-specific. Please come and, 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 and raise them, but, um, we'll, we'll send out an agenda with a reminder. It's, Mrs. Sawalka's not here. I know she's been preparing for it.
Right.
Uh, and we don't want to give incorrect or inaccurate, um, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what they are. I, I haven't.
I, I literally would give them. Right now, I just, I don't have them in front of me and I don't wanna, I go from my memory, which sometimes is good, but I don't wanna just, I don't have it.
Yep, we will release a product forum, um, and, uh, we'll, we'll get right on that. So thank you.
Great point, because it's like, sometimes you, you think that you're the only one saying it, actually a lot of people say. So you're speaking for a while. And then to see it, like sent out, other than the newsletter, even though I read that, this one specifically, you, you catch your eyes.
Yeah, just make sure we do that. Okay. Any other points on that student service forum? Any questions from the stakeholders, community? Okay. Um, so does that conclude the student, uh, the superintendent's report, Dr. Sullivan?
Anything you wanted to add, Judge?
Um, just quickly, you know, well, Jenna already talked about AP testing, so lots of happy students today. Um, we finished off the MCAS English Language Arts portion for grades three through eight. Um, we will be starting next week with science and technology for grades, um, five and eight, and then math will begin at the end of the next week. So, you know, kind of keeps going until the end of May. But we are working to consolidate the dates so that it doesn't feel like it's constant testing. Um, and then the summer learning program, we had 68, um, students sign up.
Oh, great.
So, um, really happy about that. And that's for grades one through 11. So, um, Lisa Farrell is going to be the program administrator. She's done it for the past couple of years, so. Her and I spoke today and we'll be meeting this week to kind of get things organized and hiring staff and so we're good to go. So families should know sometime by very early June, if not sooner, um, if their child is going to be part of the program.
Okay. Thank you, Doctors Sullivan and Scollins. Uh, moving on to the school committee section, uh, we'll move right in. I don't think we need a school facilities update because we just had that big, uh, discussion about last time. We all know where we are there. But are there, oh, we have a policy.
Sure do.
I did not know we had, uh, regulations.
So, um, this policy is IC slash ICA, and it's really the school year school calendar. And we, um, updated it because we, um, added a couple of things. Um, one is that we did put the number of days that we are in school, which is 185 days, which is just required by the district to make a cal-, we're not in school nowadays, but we have to make our calendar 185 days. And then we also needed to add a section around the senior class and what day they could, the latest day they could go to school. Um, so they cannot get out of school more than 12 days prior to the last day of school. And this came up in part of our tiered focus monitoring. So we made sure that we put that into our school year and school calendar policy. And that's the section at the end for, yeah, if you look down to the very end. So this was just taken from the law. Notwithstanding the minimum school year requirement set forth in 603 C M R, 703 and 2704, um, at the discretion of the school committee schedules school year for the graduating senior class of high school or vocational technical school, maybe they conclude and school retention may be held up to 12 school days before the regular scheduled closing date as set forth. So however, let's say there were snow days, um, then it's the original last day.
So, so the other students' days can push back, but our seniors would stay.
But it may not be more than 12 days.
Correct. Is any action required of the, is that discretion of the school committee? And approve the calendars? Is there any action required of the school committee to do this or our approval of the calendar self-executing?
That's it. And then we have to make sure that that actual date is on the calendar.
And we have.
Correct. And that's what we've done. In prior years, I think it was a high school calendar. It wasn't necessarily always on the district, district calendar.
Yep, that was one of the things. It was much our attention, so now it's there. I'm sure the senior class appreciates that very much that, uh. Well, the plan, I mean, the people can plan ahead and know exactly.
Right.
Because otherwise it's gonna be an awful year. That's true.
Okay, so this is essentially just a reflection of the current law to make sure that the policy is compliant. Okay, uh, are there any motion? Is there any, are there any discussion points on this? It sure seems fairly straightforward, but.
Motion to approve the calendar policy as presented.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve policy IC slash ICA as presented by, uh, the policy subcommittee and Dr. Scollins. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion seconded by Mr. Kearney. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion unanimously passes and that policy IC ICA is adopted. Thank you. Um, reports from subcommittee positions, liaison positions, anything of that nature? Go around, Ms. Clary.
Um.
Final report.
Yeah. Um, I was wondering, so I've been doing some work on, um, the website and it's not done.
Okay.
So is it all right with everyone if I continue to do work on that website?
So moved.
Right? I mean, no one else wants to do it, right? So I just, but I just want to make sure, um, because I'll just keep working with Lisa and I've been, it's on my Google Drive for my personal Google account, like, just, like, we can communicate. Okay, great.
Well, do you want to do it? You don't, shouldn't feel forced to do it. Okay.
I mean, no, but yeah.
Oh.
That's confusing.
Yeah.
No, I don't ever want to do extra work, but I do want to make sure it gets done, so I will do it. So yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so that's that. And then I just want to let everyone know that I went to a great St. Harbor event last night at the, um, high school. And there was a panel of speakers that talked about their experiences with substance use disorder and a great conversation. Um, the, the website is not accessible to me because it's being blocked because it says it has information, but it lists drugs on it. And so I'm having a mental block of the, the chair of St. Harbor, Wilton, my last name is Wilton.
Oh.
Anne Marie.
Anne Marie.
Anne Marie Wilson shared her experience as a parent. And Michael Duggan, who was the CEO at Evo Wellness, which is the treatment center on 3A, shared his personal experience and from his perspective as a treatment, um, provider. And Kristen Essen, who's a nurse supervisor at South Shore Medical, and Officer Taylor, our fabulous school resource officer, was there to offer his insight. And it was really great. And I think, um, it would be great if more people went to those things. Because there were not a lot of people there, but it was a really good event. It was a really good conversation. So thank you to St. Harbor for doing that.
Thanks very much, so. Thank you, Ms. Clary. Mr. Dialing, updates, reports?
Um, it's, this meeting, we typically have a meeting of the, um, our facilities committee in, in advance of the, of the school meeting. We delayed that, uh, one week, meeting next week because, uh, due to the efforts of, of Dr. Sullivan, we were able to get an audience with DVW. So we will, they think it's a good idea for us to have the discussion where we clarify who's responsible for what, get all responsibilities um, understood, uh, on a mutual basis. Uh, it's gonna be a fun-filled, packed meeting because we'll also have, um, athletic director Rotandi attending as well to talk about his plans for new equipment and gym. Uh, so, uh, we'll have more to report at our next meeting, which have we scheduled the next meeting?
A school committee meeting?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yes.
Is it, is it on account of that we're going through?
So we're meeting next week as a special forum and then, then the following, 2022.
Yeah, so. Yeah.
But that's the opportunity to adjust the upcoming year calendar, I think is what we need.
Yes.
So I know, I know at some point we have to adjust the upcoming calendar. And potentially welcome a new committee member.
Potentially, yeah. So we can, uh, we'll, we'll be reorganizing shortly too. I don't know that we'll do it at the next meeting, but we'll definitely set the calendar. If we don't have any other meetings scheduled, we'll have to do that, so.
So at one of those that's either set or to be set, we will update on the meeting of the facilities committee.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Dial. Mr. Kearney, anything to add to that? I bet you you're gonna be at that facility, so, so giving a meeting.
I, you know, I, I, first of all, I'm glad that we're making progress. Just on my way, given in, in, into walking in here and seeing pieces of cement on the wall, on, on, on the walkway, which is a huge safety item. And then just to see all those leaves in front of the door just makes me want to just go home, get my leaf blower and just blow the leaves out. I don't understand why that's so hard. I really don't understand why our entrances cannot be addressed. And, and, and it's upsetting and I, and I just, four years I've been saying that now. I mean, it's ridiculous, so. I do, I will wait another week, I guess. And I do, I do like the, you know, all the action. That's what I want to see, action.
I love that. I love that about you. My favorite thing about.
Just, just ta- take the leaf blower and blow the leaves out so I can walk through and, and parents can walk in the school and, and you can walk around here. Like you, Doc Sullivan, you talk about pride.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, this, this just, and, and we wonder why our kids are. I don't know, just, there's no, there's just no pride in the buildings. And it's, 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 as much as Sue, I appreciate how hard you've been working and, and you, you got your hands full. I mean, the insides of the building are clean. I, I, I can't complain about that. I go to take a drink of water. It's okay to drink it. It's the outside of the buildings and we can't, it's just, who's in charge of it? That's it. Just give us the answer. You know, and, and we'll do something about it. We'll buy electric, electric would be good. Electric leaf blowers and we'll just do the front of the buildings and start there. And, and, and I, I just don't understand why that is, it's just been going on and on and on and on. And, and, you know, these are our buildings, our children live in these buildings. And I understand that people work here, but these are our kids going to school here. And this is a wealthy community and you just wouldn't know it by looking around. You know, it just looks like, it's just.
Those leaves aren't for long, though. So we got our meeting?
Yeah, we got our meeting and, and I appreciate you guys. And, and, and look, again, I'm just saying some of the frustrations that I, you know, some of the questions that I have, I'll share with you that if we don't get them to meet with us, then answer some of the questions, like who's in charge of what? You know, what, what, what meetings do we have? Do we have monthly meetings, weekly meetings? And, you know, are we going through some, uh, action points? Because I could write out a 50 action point plan. And how are we gonna work that? So I'd really like to see some kind of action. And, and, you know, I know we've been going through a pandemic and I get that, just that going forward, um, we need to correct a lot of the situations because, you know, we're all freezing in here and, and, and then it's gonna be, in the summer, we're gonna be, the heat's gonna be on. We're all gonna be sweating. It's just, it, it's just unbelievable. It, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing. It's embarrassing to some of the. I'm not done. Um, it's, it's embarrassing to go to some of the, you know, school events and the scoreboard doesn't work. It's just, it's just unbelievable. It's embarrassing. It's embarrassing. It's embarrassing for some of the. I'm not done. It's, it's embarrassing to go to some of the, you know, school events and the scoreboard doesn't work. We're just, it just, it just seems like it's Mickey Mouse sometimes. And, you know, I know in the last couple of years, Dr. Sullivan administration's done great to work with it. But I think your hands are full sometimes and you, you're overly polite. And, and, and some of this needs to be, you know, if I need to be the not-so- polite person, I'm going to tell you right now, these schools are not up to COAS's standards. And I've said it over and over and over again. And all you have to do is walk out of this building tonight and see why we're not, we got desks everywhere. I, I just, it's just crazy. I'm done with that. The good news is that we did go to St. Harbor last night and my children were encouraged to go by another member of this said, hey, we need some people down here, come down here. So I want to, I'd like that. And I, and I also would say to anybody that has children in the school system, St. Harbor is a good way to do it because it's.
And you ambassadors have been great.
They, they're just such a good organization because they work throughout the school system, the town. They're always, my, my daughter's a leadership role in it and I'm so proud of them and proud of her. So that said, other than that, I mean, personally, I'm happy with the school system. I'm happy with the way things are going. I just think we can do better.
Yep, well, we're listening. And I think that that meeting is a good, a good step and we're working with them. There, there were, I will say, I'm not happy about the leaves, but I know there was a, there was a cleanup effort, just so you know, by DPW because we did see it in our, in our buildings on the, on the outside. But I think what it is, is it's a regular, because leaves blow back. And it's, it's going to be a regular process of, you know.
I think you do a great job on, on, on like just accountability, like when you leave the bathrooms, you have them sign up. Like why can't they do that same leadership with the department, department works? Like just sign off that you did it, you know, so I did the buildings. Yep, I walked around and made sure that they're fine. Here you go, sign off. Just like when you do the inside, we should do the outside.
And Mr. Kearney, I think that's by and large our goal for the meeting is to get that, get action and get that accountability. You know, who's going to do it, how it's going to be done. Because much of what happens when you have too many owners, you have no owners.
Right.
If we have someone who is the owner, then they won't leave either. If that's the, they know that that's their, their gun and have to count to it. And that's, that's my, that's rough.
We appreciate it.
All right. It sounds like it'll be a productive discussion. Mr. Kearney, are you, are you?
Yes.
Ms. St. Anne?
I have a bunch of meetings coming up tomorrow and Monday, so I will have plenty to report at our next regular school.
Okay, well, we'll be looking forward to that. Ms. St. Anne, I don't have any updates at this time. I don't think we have any, do we have any minutes to approve? Okay. All right, well, there have been no topics brought to my attention within 48 hours of the meeting that we did not anticipate. So don't have anything for that section, but we do have a reason to move into executive session briefly. For reason number two, which is contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We need a motion to move into executive session. Is there such a motion? Motion's been made by Mrs. St. Anne. I'll take Mrs. Cleary's at the second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed. Motion unanimously passes and we will move into the executive session. Everyone at home, we will just be adjourning the meeting offline, so there, you won't be missing anything. If you log off now, thank you so much for being here, if you were participating virtually.
Apologize for the technical issues at the beginning.
Thanks, everyone. Have a nice night.